It's time to call the meeting. So first thing we need to do is roll call. Mayor Protan Villa Lobos.
Here.
Councilmember Bunker.
There.
Councilmember Shell Allen. I think I'll take that as a here. Councilmember McClabb.
There.
And Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And Mayor Devini is present. Let's rise and say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America. And to the Constitution of the United States.
All right. Thank you. I see Mr. Wymore did make it on the on the thing, so let's all wish he had a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And the next thing on the agenda is to canvass the May first election, 2021 election. So the councilmembers that are here, open your packets. And the election results. Are. Showed. I think these have been posted and the totals were. For the mayor, Keith Smith received eighty votes. Catherine Glaze received one thirty-six. So Catherine was the winner. Councilmember put place two. Jan received one hundred and thirty-three votes. Kim Smith received eighty-one. So Jan is the winner. Councilmember place five. Sam Houston received one fifty-seven. Latrice Cook received fifty-six. So Sam is the winner. And the proposition number one, there were ninety-seven votes for disannexation and a hundred and twenty-nine against. And so proposition to disannex fails again. So with that, if anybody got any, any councilmembers got any questions about any of that?
I just have a question about the under and over vote.
What's the question?
So, yeah.
What's the question?
What are they? So, under votes, it's meaning that the city mayor, he had voters that did not vote in that race. Overvote is basically, number two, they voted for both. They voted for both candidates, so that vote was not counted.
So the total was two hundred and thirty-three, each of thirty-two people that voted. And. So the undervotes were for the general election. Because of overvotes.
There was only one overvote. The rest were undervotes. See, we have numbered how many undervotes and how many. And we had to document that showing the actual number of ballots per voter.
So that means one person voted twice?
One person voted in that particular race for both candidates.
Oh, that's.
Yes.
Okay.
That it?
I'm good.
Out there in radio land, Catherine, you got anything you want to ask about that?
No, I'm good.
Lisa? Fine, she said, all right. So with that, we 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 go to the resolution. Uh, I guess I'm supposed to read this. Resolution, the City Council of the City of Martindale, Texas, canvassing the general election held on May first, twenty twenty-one, for the election of mayor, councilmember place two and councilmember place five, and canvassing the special election. Proposition one, disannexation of Butterfly Meadows and of Hobson Ranch Estates from the city of Martindale, Caldwell County, Texas. Lots of where has is, the vote counts are shown. Uh, on there, and therefore be it resolved by the city of council, City Council of the City of Martindale, that all of the recital contained in the preamble of this resolution are found to be true and are adopted as findings of fact by the governing body and as part of its judgment. It is further found and determined that the results of the election is canvassed and tabulated in the preamble thereof. Hereof reflect their expressed desires of those persons voting at said election. And a majority of the residents qualified electors voting at said general election elect. Elected the following individuals as mayor, councilmember place two and councilmember place five, of Martindale City Council, the city of Martindale, Texas. Mayor Catherine Glaze, councilmember place two, Jan Bunker, and place five, Sam Houston Clinton. And a majority of the residents qualified electors voting at said special election voted against passing proposition one, disannexation of Butterfly Meadows and of Hobson Ranch Estates from the city of Martindale, Caldwell County, Texas. And so we need a motion to approve this resolution.
I saw one.
I'll second that.
Second. So we need, Mike, how say you?
I'll say yea.
Sam, how say you?
Yea.
And Jan, how say you?
Yea.
Uh, that's all five. So we hit, the motion passes five oh. I get to sign. This one is my last official duty. And pass that back to Ms. Sylvia. And that moves us to the officiation of the swear again. So we have a certificate of election. A statement of office and an oath of office, and we're going to turn this over to Judge DeLeon to go do that and.
Judge DeLeon, precinct three. Caldwell County. Justice of the peace. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on first day of May twenty twenty-one, Sam Houston Clinton was duly elected city council member place five.
You got it.
And there's the camera.
So now I'm gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna have you repeat after me for the vote, for the oath of office. Raise your right hand, please. And repeat after me. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Sam, I, Sam Houston Clinton.
I, Sam Houston Clinton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
Place five.
Place five.
City of Martindale.
City of Martindale.
Caldwell County.
Caldwell County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And I will do the best.
And I will do the best.
On my ability.
On my ability.
To preserve.
To preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And just for the record, Sam had signed previously the statement of office, right?
Yes.
All three of them have.
All three of them have. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for putting me first. I appreciate that. Yeah, well, I'm.
Do they do this at the end, all of them, or do you want to do it right now? Do I do them all? That's me, right now?
I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna sit in back there. Okay, thank you.
They're doing that. I'm gonna go ahead and take time to, uh, for the mayor. He's still the mayor at the right now. I just want to say, you know, it's with our greatest appreciation. Robert Devini, we hereby present you with this award in recognition for your commitment and dedication of mayoral service to the city of Martindale. We greatly appreciate your devotion to the citizens of Martindale, and we thank you, and I thank you with all my.
I stick it around till midnight. All right. Thank, thank y'all. Thank you. I do appreciate it. It's been my, my pleasure and my honor to be able to serve citizens of Martindale. All right. Next one up should be Jan, I believe, because she's here and we'll get Catherine.
I'll do this. Sorry, she just had me. In the name and by the, and the, by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on first day of May twenty twenty-one. Jan Bunker was duly elected city council member place two. Congratulations. I was mine. Congratulations. I will administer the oath of office. Will you repeat after me? In the name and by the authority. In the name. Of, in the name. By the authority and by the authority of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
I, Jan Bunker.
I, Jan Bunker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
Place two.
Place two.
City of Martindale.
Martindale.
Caldwell County.
Caldwell County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And I will do the best.
And I will do the best.
On my ability.
On my ability.
To preserve.
To preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. So we're done? Yes, ma'am.
All right. That brings us to Catherine. This is the first one of these we've done on Zoom, Catherine, so I hope this goes. Okay. And I assumed that she should just talk to the camera. It's.
So Catherine.
Yes.
By the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on first day of May twenty twenty-one. Catherine Glaze was duly elected mayor.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna read to you. Can I have one in because this is too small for me to read. Should, oh, no, it's just.
I can follow along.
Yes, the print, the, okay, let me, I'll read from this one right here. I'm gonna administer the oath of office. Can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Okay. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I.
I.
Catherine.
Catherine Glaze. I Catherine. I'm sorry.
I Catherine B. Glaze.
I Catherine B. Glaze.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office of.
Of city council member.
Of city.
Sorry.
Of mayor.
Duly elected mayor. The print is so small, I'm so sorry. Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
Of Martindale, Texas.
Of Martindale, Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And I will.
And I will.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And this is to confirm that this is your signature for the oath of office?
Yes, ma'am.
Catherine B. Glaze?
Yes.
So that she already signed it?
Excellent.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you very much.
All right. And that brings us to option C here, photos. Does anybody want photos? Sam, you want to come up here and get photos as well? Y'all can get to the backdrop up here, shoot around there, man. Y'all can come slide back in the back and use that.
And this is hers, ex-mayor.
Oh. First, you're first, Sam.
Over there? Where?
Me?
What?
It's you.
Oh, okay. Where, where are we doing it?
I don't sure.
I don't want to be like the.
Oh, you're in the stand.
Well, it's the new administration. Catherine, I wish you were here.
I wish I was there, too.
Mask it off.
One, two, three. And I'm smiling.
Yeah, I take cheese.
All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming out.
I appreciate.
Let me go. John, are you fixing the leaf?
The ball is yours. You have the gall.
Anita, are you fixing the leaf?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, come. Oh, ready. Okay. Um. So Sam, why don't you grab a couple of, do you want to go now?
Yes, sir.
Well, thanks for all your help. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very well, very well done. Like, wordly smooth.
Thank you.
I'll have to give a. Wait for Sonja. She's almost here. Okay. Mayor Glaze?
Yes.
I may need to leave just for five minutes to take Sam home later on.
Okay.
Imagine that.
Oh, is this ice cream?
Thank you, everybody. I think he's standing. Thank you. Bye, everybody.
All right. Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Thanks again, Anita.
Do we have any public comments? Do we have any who've signed up for public comments? Public comments?
Sure.
Thank you.
Others. All right, Mayor Glaze, I think we're ready to go to the next agenda item.
Okay, are there any public comments?
None.
No, no, ma'am.
No comments. Okay, then I guess we'll go on to the reports and announcements. You're up, Jared.
All right. So, uh, three items on, on the docket for today, but we'll begin with the audit report from Haney and Company. You should, for those who are participating on Zoom, you receive this via email. Last night, I think, again this morning, and then we also have the word document here. And at this point, I'll turn it over to the representative from Haney Company to, to walk us through the, the finer points, and then we can pepper them with, uh, questions. And then later in the agenda, we'll actually either, we'll take, there's a discussion, possible action to accept the audit report and the, um, financial statement. So with that.
That's okay?
Yeah, that, that'll pick up from here.
Well, thank you, everyone. I am Beth Packer. I'm with Haney and Company CPAs, and I, um, I, I personally prepared the report for you today. So, uh, with that, um, I wanted to thank you all for your time, letting me come and present to y'all. And I also want to give a special thank you to, uh, Duane, since he was, um, you know, very, very much involved in, in helping us prepare the audit. Okay. Uh, with that being said, um, the city's audit is actually, it actually consists of two audits. We have two reports in this lovely document. Uh, the first talks about the financial statements and the condition of those. Uh, the second audit that we do talks about the internal controls, and that letter is actually in the back of the report. So you get a two for one here.
Okay.
Okay. So the, the first letter I want to bring your attention to is on page two. This talks mainly about the financial statements and what condition that they are in. Um, so page two, it just uses the, our standard language. You know, what, what did we actually do for you as the auditors? Um, talks, it talks about how we express an opinion over the financial statements and the condition in which they are, they are in, and that we perform those procedures based on generally accepted governmental auditing standards and generally accepted accounting principles. If we move over to page three, up at the top. There's this section called opinions. This is where we actually express an opinion, uh, over the, the financial statements and, and the testing that we conducted. So I'll just read this for everyone. It says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material aspect, respects the respective financial position of governmental activities, the business type activities, and each major fund of the city as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, the cash flows thereof for the year ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." I know that's a bit wordy. So in a nutshell, that says that you actually have a clean audit. That we didn't have any major findings that would result in the financial statements of being unreliable. So to the, to the best of our testing and, um, and searching, you have a clean audit. Okay. But I do want to bring your attention, there is a restatement in the financial statements, is the paragraph immediately below. And this, uh, we uncovered with the help of, uh, Mayor Devini, or former Mayor Devini, um, and, uh, Mr. Duane Anderson. So it turns out there were sewer line additions that were not capitalized or reflected as a capital asset in the financial statements. Duane and Mayor Devini, uh, did a thorough search of the, uh, capital asset listing that they maintain and saw, hey, you know, this should have been captured in a previous period. Let's go ahead and get it fixed. Make sure we're incorporating everything so we have a true and complete picture of all the capital assets that belong to the city. Now, the way this was accounted for previously, it was just expensed in the previous period. It had not been capitalized. So, um, you'll see as we go through the remainder of the report, uh, report that there is an increase in the capital assets and an increase in your fund balance overall. Okay. Uh, so.
Are there any questions on that point?
How much, what, how much we're talking about?
It was, it was about two hundred and seventy thousand, I believe, was, was the capital asset, was the, was the grant amount. So this was relation to the grant that put some wastewater system pipes, connections in the skyline, Skyview, um, area. And so.
Six years ago.
Yeah. And so we're just cleaning the books on, on that, making sure that's captured as a capital asset. Got you.
Oh, okay.
Right. And then we do have more details on that. It's actually on page forty-nine of the report. It's closer to the back here, and it talks about the, the overall financial effect. So, uh, the net effect is it was two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So I believe it was two hundred and eighty thousand, and then the difference would be the depreciation that's accumulated over time.
Yep.
All right. So it, since we're close to the back of the paper, the report, uh, let's go to page fifty-eight. That's our second audit here. And it talks about the internal controls of the city. So although we don't test the controls of the city a hundred percent, we do at least take those into consideration as we are doing the financial statement audit. Generally speaking, if you have bad controls, you're likely to have a bad audit. Um, so during the course of the audit, we did not have any major findings other than what we just discussed. It's just making that correction for the capital assets to show them correctly in the financial statements. And so you'll see on page fifty-nine, you briefly mention that. It's item twenty twenty dash zero zero one. It's at the end of paragraph one here. It's also kind of shows at the end of paragraph two. It just briefly mentioned that and say, this is the only finding, um, that came about. And on the next page, page sixty, this just goes more into detail what that was all about. And just says, "Thank you for mentioning that to us. We've incorporated that now. And going forward, just make sure to, to do a complete inventory and, um, that way we don't have a situation like this happen again." And I want to also mention at the, the end of the, um, the page here, um, that management has since corrected that issue. All right. Now, as far as the financial statements, we're going, I apologize, we're jumping around a little bit here. Let's go to page five. We're going to get into the financial highlights of the, the financial statements overall. So page five, uh, starts our management discussion and analysis. This goes on till about page fourteen, I believe. Thirty. From pages five to thirteen, this is a, a great summary of what happened to the city financially overall. The activities that we participated in and, um, the changes from one year to the next. So in, uh, page five, we have several bullet points here. I want to mention, uh, that in our general fund, the fund balance did increase by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. As compared to the prior year. For the utility fund, it actually decreased by forty-five thousand dollars. And that the city did make, uh, its regular scheduled payments to the state for the, the liability. That's reflected on the books. So the result of those changes in the, in the general fund, the increase is a result of paying down that debt. You're getting into a healthier position because the debt is being reduced. And you, you have more financial flexibility going forward. Uh, for the utility fund reduction, um, that's actually the result of adding in those new capital assets and, and can taking that additional depreciation into consideration. Okay. So it's not that you overspent during the period, uh, for the utility fund. It's just that we're doing more depreciation on those capital assets.
These are not cash balances, then?
Correct. These are not cash balances. This, this is a fund balance overall. This is the accumulation of all revenues and expenses over the existence of Martindale.
Okay, and it says that the city is substantially, um, is debt-free.
Substantially debt-free. That means.
Other than the big.
Correct. Yes. So you just only have that, that one big debt. There are no additional, uh, debts that we're aware of. So like, there's no loans or leases on, on trucks or buildings or anything to that effect.
What about, uh, with the police car lease? Would it be reflected or no?
Next year's.
No, okay.
Yeah, that, that was not in this, this.
And twenty percent of the sales tax is still going towards that liability?
Yes, that's, that's still happening. Yes. Uh, if we move over to page nine, you'll actually see the dollar figure. Uh, we do a current year. We do a current year versus prior year side by side. And this is just a a summarized of the financial statements. If you wanted to see more detail, like the individual line items like cash, accounts receivable. Accounts payable, we would take a look at page fourteen, which is the more detailed schedule. But for for reading simplicity, we can look at page nine. About double the number of lines.
In restricted assets, is that just the court restricted assets? Or are we also including the street and road repair fund? It's just this court, okay?
It's just court and I believe a hundred and nine dollars is for community development fund. But it's minor compared to what's in the general. Okay, so still looking at page nine, looking side by side, you'll see that most everything is in line. Relatively the same, with the exception of maybe capital assets. There's a reduction on both the well, on the governmental funds. And on the business type funds. And that's associated with just depreciation again. On deferred inflows, this is pension and other post employment benefit. Costs, they these are calculated by TMRS. And they do, TMRS does an annual evaluation to determine. The amount of money that's going to be paid out in retirement over a period of time. So those the deferred outflows and inflows. Those are subject to TMRS changes. TMRS will dictate what those balances are. And they're just actuarial valuations. So those are non cash activities. And then your net position further down. We see the increase in the governmental activities. That's from one point four million to one point five million. That's about one hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. So you've actually gone to the positive, your unrestricted fund balances in the positive, which is a great move. And that's just as a result of paying down that long term liability to the state. And then your business type activities, you'll see that fund balance did go down. But that's because we added the capital assets and the associated depreciation that goes along with it.
From the suit, which probably six years.
Now, if we move over to page ten. This is the income statement. This is likely what you're accustomed to seeing when you're doing your budget versus actual comparisons. So we'll see that charges for services did reduce in the governmental activities. Property taxes went up slightly, but that's because of property tax rates and, you know, the addition and. Of any citizens that they've moved into the city or revaluations of properties. And then your general government expenses went down. And I believe that's just associated with COVID, just doing fewer activities. Just having fewer costs overall.
Being more efficient. Is any of that? So we had operating grants, fourteen thousand, is that the CRF fund? Then that we that port, did we receive any funding in FY twenty on that? I'm looking at the operating grants, fourteen thousand.
Yes.
Operating grants?
Yeah, that that's coronavirus money that. And the rest of that is is going to settle in this fiscal year.
What's what's different for me is we had the COVID, we actually got more tech, more tax sales tax revenue even.
Yeah, I think that's mainly because, you know, people more people shopped at home. And ordering from Amazon is shopping at home.
That makes sense, okay.
And they brought the the sales taxes to that.
Especially how much of the commerce is happening outside the city by city residents?
I'm sure it hurts. Because they they depend on so much coming from out of town.
Well, the student base, I'm sure. In the the business type activities, if you go down to the bottom, there's a line called prior year adjustment. The net balance of two sixty five oh seven oh, that's the those capital assets we were talking about earlier. And so you can see the the change in net position overall.
Do we have the ability to? Look at like where has miscellaneous revenue or charges for services and drill down to that at our level? If we want for next year's budget purposes, if we wanted to.
We can.
Take a look at that.
I can give you a what we call a grouping schedule and it shows the accounts, the individual accounts that go into each of those categories.
I'll follow up with the email, that'd be great.
And then if we move to page thirteen, we kind of re-represent your follow over again. But in page thirteen. We have our capital asset schedule. I believe that's going to need correction. So governmental activity didn't have very much of a change. Business type activities are are supposed to be showing the two hundred and sixty five thousand dollar addition. I'll need to make that correction. So please make a note of that.
That was for the two sixty five, right?
Yes. Oh, you know, actually, it it is incorporated what we did. Twenty nineteen column should be marked as restated. It's already incorporating those additions. When we go to page thirty four, which is the matching schedule. So there's there's a schedule identical to this. Yes, on page thirty four. We actually, we we say it is a restated balance. So that would be a little bit easier to see what should it have looked like in a previous period? So these numbers here on page thirty four are identical to page thirteen. It just, we need to add the word restated on the twenty one. So that is the summary of the financial statements. If you ever want to see the details further broken down, pages fourteen through. Twenty one will give you a more detailed view of the schedules that we just looked at. Again, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. I really, really love answering questions, my favorite thing to do.
Do we have a a statement of cash flows on the general fund?
No, so the governmental practices don't require a cash flow for the general fund.
Business activities?
Because of its activity, because it's typically maintained in the governmental basis, not the full accrual gap basis. But we do have a cash flow for the business type activities.
Now, that question is in reference to page twenty one for.
I I I had a question. Where's the restricted revenue from the hotel tax monies? It's a restricted revenue as an income revenue.
So in FY twenty, that was still managed with our general fund. And FY twenty one budget year, we're making that change, so it's counted as a restricted account. Well, it's it's in effect restricted. We're just improving our chart of accounts, if you will, by categorizing it correctly as a restricted item, not as a general fund item.
So it wasn't considered restricted then?
It was restricted, it just wasn't managed within an an restricted account. So it's something that internally, we knew what we were doing, not to touch it, except for things that were that would comply with the law. We're now in FY twenty one, putting more barriers around that. And actually, as we look at these reports going forward, would be counted as part of that restricted similar to the court restricted funds or other. Another restricted use like our street and roads, sales tax revenue.
Are there any questions, additional questions on the report?
On page forty eight, where it says that the 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 amount that the former employee regarding the debt for the twenty nine thousand two hundred and ninety five. That is, it is being reflected, the payments where they're being made and.
Yes. Yes.
It was five hundred and nine dollars.
So that's included on page fourteen in the accrued liabilities line. And like Jared was just saying, it's five hundred dollars.
It's a date, it's been five hundred and nine dollars that it's been paid.
It's like sixty dollars a quarter or something is all she's required to pay.
How how much total has she paid towards her?
Five hundred and nine. Thank you.
It's connect, I guess that's 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 part of the agreement, I guess, there's no way to to get more money.
What about? Have actually stopped coming. I'm I'm not sure if if maybe the judgment or whatever has expired. But the monies have stopped coming.
Oh, really?
Why, really? Why is that?
Even when it was coming, it was only sixty bucks.
Is there a wage garnishment issue if she's not receiving wages? She wouldn't have collection or I don't know.
Is that worth going after, one after, is that worth it?
You know, it, we got, I think, maybe one payment since uh since this report, but that's about it.
Is there any way to put it, you know, I mean?
But the screws?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I've I've not ever read that, you know.
Yeah, I've I've looked at the judgment either, but.
There's quite a file in there.
That's something we would.
It's quite extensive.
But still, she's stayed because of due to COVID, she may not have been required to pay it.
Yeah, but how long ago, what, five years?
The judge needs to be notified.
Yes, I agree.
That's something I'll, we can take with.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Were there any any pages in the report or instructions you have related to the report?
Catherine or Lisa, any questions on your end?
No, sir. When you were talking about legal restitution, was that from the previous bookkeeper?
Yes.
Yeah, like three or four bookkeepers ago.
Bookkeepers ago, yes.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks for driving up here in the bad weather.
Oh, yes. It was scenic, at least, you know, the parts I couldn't see through the rain.
Where are you from?
San Antonio.
Okay, well, that thirty five.
Well, I I took one thirty, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I went around over there. I'm not playing with thirty five today. All right, thank you all.
Yeah. Jan. Help kick for the drive issue. It's still a long, it's still a long meeting.
I'm going to stay more, it's 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 fine.
The the next update I had is, I don't have slides for it, it's just a update on the utility billing. At at our previous city council meeting, I believe it was April, we had a discussion about. Sending notices for shut offs to to delinquent accounts. We sent seventy two notices that there's be subject to shut off if they had not paid by the due date, which was May tenth. Of those, all but seven at least satisfied their delinquent accounts. Doesn't mean that they are completely square on the billing, but those amounts that were past due, they have paid. And so we're looking at only seven shut off notices for for this month. So that's that's quite an improvement. Appreciate council and your guidance on that. And I think going forward, we have a pretty good process to to handle that. One of the issues that may arise that we might want to look at is people who always pay thirty days behind. So they're keeping themselves from getting shut off, but every month they're still a month behind. In some ways, it all it does is makes their bill either ten percent or ten dollars more expensive depending on their service levels. And causes some administrative burden, but either they're they'll catch up or they'll get shut off at some point. But it's something that a loophole, if you will, that we might want to consider addressing if if it becomes more of an issue. But overall, I think it's a good news for it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So. Because I understand that trap, you know, and you don't have enough to make a double payment. And you get penalized for every single time, and so you end up staying in that trap. We don't think people think about. Do we, do we have anything on the book that says you have to be ninety days in arrears to enter into a payment agreement?
They can, and you can, you can, you don't, you do not have to be delinquent on your account to enter into a payment agreement.
Okay, that's that's what I thought.
And so. Even if you have a upcoming bill due in your account square, you could still, if you have some hardship that would qualify. You could, you could apply for that, we consider it most likely would work with that customer.
So so I would like to see kind of some education happen, especially for those who come in in person and make their payments. Or even put a note on billing in the future months. That's that, you know, gives people opportunity to pay ten dollars a month on that one month last, you know, that's past due. It might take them, you know, six months to pay it off, but they'll stop being behind at some point. I don't think people realize that they can do that. I think people think that they have to be, you know, really far behind before they can do that, so.
Okay, yeah, we can include a note on our, you know, the backside of the statement or our news from city hall. Trying to not, our our billing statements themselves are becoming quite cluttered with news announcements and da, da, da. It was, it was. I like straight lines, and so we might just put it on the back or somewhere else. But we'll make sure that people are aware of it. And also, it's on our, it's on our website, they can even apply online. And it's been a frequent discussion, as you know, in city council meetings. And so hopefully those who who here, if you know of a neighbor who who might be in that scenario. And we'll try to reach out to those customers and let them know individually. But feel free to put it on Facebook or whatever. I know there's a community Facebook that's out there. That might be something that if you're engaged in that sort of thing, you can put a plug in and provide the link on our website to to do that. All right, any other questions on that? Quickly share, share my screen here. The next item is kind of, it kind of hit us sideways. So the Caldwell County collects a dollar fifty for each registered vehicle every year. To support a child safety program per a state statute, traffic code five with two dot four oh three. Interested in looking it up. Incorporated municipalities such as Martinville, within a county that collects that that cost, that fee. Can get a pro rated share of those funds. And so Caldwell County went. can get a prorated share of those funds. And so Caldwell County went through and, I don't know if they're doing the audit, but they're looking at this program a little more closely and, and identified that City of Martindale is set to receive five thou, a little over five thousand dollars, and that covers twenty seventeen through, through twenty twenty, four years of collection. And they, they intend to send that, those funds to us, and they'll be sending quarterly deposits going forward. The use of those funds are, are restricted. It's another restricted use fund, kind of like court restricted, hotel tax, what, what have you. And the restrictions on this are that must be, that the, the funds either be used for a deposit, an additional, the additional money in an interest-bearing account, such as our, our current investment accounts. They can use the, the money for programs designed to enhance child safety, health, or nutrition, uh, including child abuse prevention and intervention, and drug and alcohol abuse prevention. Or expand, or expend tho, those monies for programs designed to enhance, uh, public safety and security. With the funds that we've received, the five, a little over five thousand, has put in our PFI account for now, one, uh, one of those three options. But going forward, this, this likely be an opportunity for city council to weigh in on, on programs that, that city could support, with these funds through nonprofits, um, that, that are doing these sort of things or what have you. So just want to make, make y'all aware that we're receiving funds from the county. We're not doing anything with them yet. There could be a use for them in the future along these guidelines. And if, uh, individually or as a whole council, um, has some ideas on what to do with that, let me know and we can, we can put it on agenda. I haven't given much thought to this specific use of, to this point with other things going on, but want to make sure everybody else is aware.
A couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, did the county implement this program in two thousand, I mean, in twenty seventeen? And began collecting a dollar fifty in twenty seventeen?
I believe, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And then did we receive notice from them, or is this something that you stumbled across or someone else in the office?
Um, previous mayor, Mayor Devini, um, he, he was notified about this and the county reached out to them, let him know. And I think the city got notified. I wasn't aware of this. Um, I'm not sure if the city was made aware of it back in twenty seventeen or not. I, I don't, I don't know, but I, I think it's one of those, in, in a larger area, I mean, this could have, you know, with more, higher population density, higher, you know, vehicle registrations, it turns into a pretty significant chunk of change to
Sure.
go off and do things in, in higher density met, metropolitan areas, where a place like Martindale, it's, it's, it's hard to be useful with, with those limited funds. Kind of like our court restricted accounts that we have now, you know.
Well, I just, I appreciate knowing, knowing how it came, where it came from and, and keeping it on our radar going forward. So thank you, thank you, um, everybody in the office.
And that's, that's all I have for the city administrative report, uh, for today. So, mayor, back to you.
Okay, so now we go on to the financial report. Dwayne?
Thank you all. Um, you should have a copy of the, uh, financial report for the month of April. The first page is actually, uh, a cash balance, statement as of today, and you see our, uh, general fund at seventy thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars, street and road fund at thirty-six eighty-three, court restricted, police restricted, you see those. Eleven and, uh, thirty-eight hundred, utility fund, utility deposit fund, and the, uh, community development fund. These, these, uh, accounts are all at First Lockhart Bank, uh, totaling one hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Then we have, uh, the tax pool, um, investment funds, uh, interest-bearing funds, the emergency fund, uh, at two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Then you see the, uh, Public Funds Investment Act, uh, account that Jared mentioned earlier. I will say that, um, I have not put that county money in this account yet.
Okay.
Uh, I didn't realize that, uh, needed to. It's just in the general fund.
Oh, it, it's, it's, it's common.
Yeah. And also, um, uh, Mr. Clinton, oh, he's, uh, his head down. You notice the hotel tax is reported as restricted, uh, every month. And we are, uh, listing that, um, in that manner on this, this report. So the Public Fund Investment Act, um, account has two hundred and one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars in it. Then you see the long-term capital improvement fund. Uh, that first line, hundred and, that hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars is where the, um, the excess, uh, I forget the term that Beth used, but the, uh, excess fund balance from the prior year was rolled into this account earlier in the year. That's why there's a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars there. Then we have the reserve, uh, for the patrol car still sitting there. And then you see the, uh, amount due to comptroller for the, for the fines. That is continuing, continuing to be serviced. Any questions on the cash balances, um, right now? Okay, the next page lists, is listed, uh, profit and loss budget versus actual for the general fund. And, uh, this is, um, the main governmental, uh, fund of the city. And you see the property tax revenue, the, the top line at, uh, uh, nearly three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. We brought in ninety-six percent of the revenue, uh, for the year. It, uh, it continues to come in, uh, two to three thousand dollars, uh, per month, but the lion's share of that money has come in. The, uh, the one, uh, that sticks out to me, if you're looking at the percentage of budget column here, that miscellaneous fee revenue on five oh seven oh, that's where I put that child safety money. So we've got to figure out where that really needs to land, but that's where it is at the moment. And it's really blowing that, that line up. So total income, four hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars, eighty-five percent of, uh, of revenue. You see personnel is at fifty-six percent. I didn't do my little, uh, percentage of, before I got up here. I think we're fifty-eight percent through the year, so personnel costs are, um, are in line. Uh, then the operating costs, spent roughly fifty-three percent of the, uh, of the operating costs for the year. They really jumped out there. Maybe we're a little ahead on software expense, but that's, uh, one time of year.
So the, the election expenses are, do we anticipate additional expenses rolling in? That's line sixty-five twenty?
Yeah, we, we did, uh, an analysis of that today. We've spent about fourteen thousand dollars, uh, through today on a fifteen thousand dollar annual budget. So, um, hopefully there's not any more elections this, this week.
Right.
Okay, uh, net ordinary income, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, uh, versus a budget of two oh one. So you can see the numbers are, are looking good, uh, so far this year. Now, as we continue on, the, the, the expenses will continue to march forward, but the revenue is going to slow down. Really already has, uh, for this time. And.
We've got ninety, ninety-six percent of our.
Property taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, our main source is already in. And then the, uh, next page has contractual expenses. Those are at about sixty-five percent of the budget. Some of them are janitorial service. That one continues to run ahead until we get to the remainder of the, uh, coronavirus relief fund monies. We got that all.
When we proceed up?
When will we receive it?
Yeah, I mean, when we force, when do we force, we will receive it?
You know, I don't know that they've told me. We've got everything submitted timely by about the, I think it was the twenty-seventh of April. We have another forty-eight thousand dollars coming, uh, from that fund, uh, that's gonna, that's gonna go against this report. So, um, but I, I don't know if it's thirty days, sixty days, when exactly it, it'll be coming. Uh, so we have, uh, cleared every bar with them.
Thank you.
In the American Recovery Plan Act, um, the first, and there's going to be two dispersments of that. The first one probably coming in the next sixty, ninety days. The treasury, US Treasury Department finally put out guidance. And so shortly thereafter, funding, funding will start flowing, and then ours will come through the state. And so a little bit of delay in it, but probably get that before the end of the fiscal year is out.
But that was really where I was going, that's really where I was going, is that I would love to see it be clean and not have to carry over to next year's budget.
Well, what, likely what we'd do is put, put that in another account. So that's something we can talk about when we get to the budget process. We're currently budgeting based off expected revenues for that next year. We're not taking into account cash on hand in our budget processes as we go forward for the most part. And that's, that's something that we, we, we can look at in the next budget.
Thank you.
Is this Civic Plus? Is that?
It's the website annual.
Yes, I know what it is. I'm just saying, is this an annual? It seems like I saw it on the last.
You know, I think it was unpaid. You see it, it's in the beginning balance there. We've had the bill for months, but it had a due date of April tenth or something like that. The check wasn't written.
What line item is that?
Yeah, just look under.
But it's in that software line. The one that I commented is over budget.
Okay.
Uh, sixty-five fifty-two.
Thank you. I got it.
Okay, uh, so the next, uh, next page, the vendor balance detail shows bills received, indoor paid in the, uh, month of April. Any questions on any of those?
As I, as, as I see, uh, bear veritas on here, um, actually no, I'll, I'll save my question for later.
Okay, any questions on, uh, vendor payments? Okay, the next report is of the, uh, utility fund, uh, budget report. Total income, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, uh, versus a budget of three hundred and seven for the year, fifty-eight percent through the year on incomes. We're right on, um, right on plan here. It's worth noting, all of these people that are catching up on their bills have already been billed, and they're, they were already in this revenue. We're basically collecting outstanding, uh, accounts receivable. So this can look like everything's right on track in this report, but it may not all necessarily be, uh, collected, but has been, uh, largely cleaned up at this point. And then you see expenses, uh, totaling one hundred and fifty-five thousand. Roughly half the, uh, budget has been spent. So the, uh, there's a net income in that fund through the month of April. And then the next, uh, page shows expenditures in that that time very quiet month on the, uh, utility side. And then there, there is another report. Once we get the, uh, the, the rest of the coronavirus relief fund, I'll do a, a report on that, uh, community development fund. Uh, there just has been no activity in it for the past several months. So I didn't, I didn't put it.
And thank you for helping with the budget.
I think, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Audit?
Yeah.
Yeah. My pleasure. It's a, it, it takes a lot of weight off of me when, when, uh, entities have audits.
Feels like you got an A on it. There you go.
Yeah, except we turned ourselves down on something for five years.
That's good.
At least you get bonus points for that.
Yeah, at least it added assets.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, court report. Tony Fusco?
Yes, good, good evening, good evening, mayor. I don't know what's wrong with my video. It, it's not on, but, uh, anyway, it's good to see everybody. Congratulations to the new council members and yourself. Uh, anyway, I think everybody's got, uh, a report in front of them. And as you will see from the first page, these are the numbers that are compared April this, uh, April twenty-one to April last year, right after COVID, you can see, uh, the, uh, the numbers are, um, anybody, the stark contrast between the two. And, uh, as it says on the front page, all our reports are current, okay? And that's an estimation for our, uh, our quarterly payment at the, at the, uh, the last line there. And you will see the following pages are, are basically the numbers for this year and for last year in April. And if anybody has any questions, and I know this is probably, uh, completely new to some of you, I will try and answer any of your questions that you may have.
Um, I, I wanted to ask, um, have y'all gotten like halfway through, uh, the docket for cases that need to be heard? Or where are you at, you know, with hearing cases?
We are going to be holding pre-trials at the end of this month. And we will be, uh, if, if current trends persist and allow us to do so, we will be, uh, resuming pre-trials, basically.
And so y'all are doing that in person? You're not doing anything else in Zoom, or is it all in person?
We're, we're gonna do it in person. We're staggering, uh, through every, every forty-five minutes. And, uh, and we're, I think that, uh, that's going to work out just fine. Usually on those things, you have about half, uh, of the, uh, the defendant's half will show up. The other half will ask for continuances, or they will, uh, enter into a plea agreement prior to. So whatever number you have, say if it's, if it's fifty, uh, you can assume that about twenty-five will show up. So with those being staggered, and, uh, I, I think we can social distance everybody and keep everybody, uh, in, uh, I think we can do that in the lobby area, and we are prepared for it to spill out onto the sidewalk minimally, if absolutely necessary. So, uh, but yes, we're going to be after, after, uh, a year, we're going to be resuming pre-trials.
Very good.
Yes, that is good.
Very good, very good. It's kind of strange being here in my dining room.
Yeah, it's hopefully we'll be able to get back together here soon. I'm, I'm in my, I'm still in my office, so, uh, yeah, we can, it, it'll be nice to be around people again.
Yes, yes.
And, uh, the, uh, so yeah, that's, uh, that is what is going on with the court. Uh, we are going to uh, full steam ahead, and we're going to do everything we can as safely as we can and try and, you know, make our way back to, you know, to some sense of normalcy.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, then, um, I heard that Chief Jurgens also has COVID. I don't have COVID. My husband does. So I'm in quarantine. That's why I'm here. Um, so I imagine there's no police report tonight. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
But I would like to, um, say something, um, mayor, if I can.
Sure.
Because I know there, there's probably people that are on, and I feel like us not addressing it as a city, just because our chief is not here, you know, then we would not be, we would not be conducting ourselves like in a humanely manner for a tragedy that struck our town. So last, last night, there were two individuals, um, there at Skull Bridge, Skull Road at the parking area. There was a shooting, there was a person that died on the scene. There was a person that was transported to Seaton and Kyle that passed away at the hospital. Campbell County Sheriff's Office is conducting the investigation. The perpetrators were arrested during the whole time that this was going on last night. I, along with our former Mayor Devini, along with our council members, we were all in, uh, constant communication in regards to our citizens because that's our priority here. So I wanted to assure you that, you know, we, we have that first and foremost. Our condolences do go out to the families that did, uh, lose their loved ones and they will definitely be in our prayers. Also, you know, we as a city, we have to do everything to make sure that our citizens are safe. So we were in communication and if anybody was out there or, you know, the investigation led to where there was somebody in town, there was going to be a reverse nine-one-one call, uh, being made to our citizen. So I just wanted to make sure that our citizens know that our allegiance is to them, our visitors that come to this area. And, um, you know, it's very, uh, it's a tragedy. So just know that our prayers are with the families and, um, that's all the information that we have at this time.
Right, and, and if, if I may, Mayor, um, um, member Veeleboes, thank you very much for your leadership in getting that information out and being in contact with the county. I do want to personally and on behalf of, behalf of the other residents, thank you for, uh, intervening in that area, which segues into a question that I have in regards to police. Therefore, this would be the appropriate time to, to, to raise the questions. The fact that I, as a council member, do not even know for sure how many officers we have is troubling to me. So I, I would like some type of, uh, update. I understand obviously that chief is not available. However, um, how many officers do we have? The last meeting, uh, there was made mention that we hired a female officer, but yet I'm, I haven't seen anyone or, you know, is there any kind of update you can give us, Jared?
I, I can give a partial update. So yes, we're in the process of onboarding a, a third part-time officer to complete our full complement of two full-time equivalent, uh, police officers. I am, I'm not exactly certain on the causes of the delay in getting her onboard, but I know that she has been doing ride-alongs with our, um, current police force in anticipation for, for bringing her onboard.
Who is our current police force?
Currently, we have a, a full-time chief of police and two part-time police officers. Um, and they, we have zero reserves.
Really?
I believe at the point, at this time, we might have one, a former part-time officer may have gone to reserve status, but I don't think that happened. Unless, I, I, I believe that we have no reserves at this point.
It would be, it would be. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, with the, with COVID impacts, we lose our work week, uh, chief of police and some of our evening shifts with, with COVID impacts. We're essentially operating up until, I think, today, we might have got one of those police office, one of those part-time police officers back off the COVID restrictions. But for there, for a while there, we were only working on one part-time police officer and his second job is the, is the fire chief at Berchtesgaden International Airport, Monday through Friday. So he only comes in on, on the weekend. So we, we are relying currently on the sheriff's office department to respond to emergencies and to handle calls within the city of Martinville.
Okay, and that, that may actually negate, or tell me the answer to the question that I had, which is, you know, it would be a request of mine for in future meetings, doesn't have to necessarily be the next one, but preferably, for those new officers to come to a meeting, just so that in this section, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but so that we can be introduced, so that we, we can know who they are. I don't know their names, I know nothing. And then the next question is, when something does happen, like chief getting COVID, who steps up? Which one of those officers steps up as far as fulfilling the duty of, of doing the blotter?
So in, in that case, we're, we're restricted, we're at COVID restrictions on the remaining police force and availability restrictions. Both, both our current police, um, part-time police officers have full-time jobs. And so in this case, I believe the agenda was set prior to notification of a COVID positive case within our police, uh, police force. At the time, we were down to just one part-time officer who's only available on the weekends. So there wouldn't be an opportunity to bring him on to, to discuss the blotter. And I don't think the blotter was built at that point because of the COVID, so. Well, we can take that back to have the, if, if the chief police is out, if council, um, deems appropriate to have a police officer presented, we can certainly arrange that.
Based on the timeframe of last night's happenings and all of this, I think it may be, um, of merit to, to reassess at, at some point in the very near future. Residents are asking lots of questions and they are valid questions and, and of concern.
Yeah.
Maybe it's, maybe it's the appropriate time, but there has been issues at that parking lot, break, break, uh, break-ins.
I know we have that as a future agenda.
And see, so then this is one thing, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but talking about two people that lost their lives, our police force right now and their situation and us discussing their medical conditions right now is not really right now what we should be focusing on. We got time to take care of our police and discuss them and do that at a meeting. Or for it to be brought out like as, at the forefront, two people lost their lives here. So that's what, um, you know, we need to like, kind of like, let that soak in for a little bit and then the rest is going to come. We'll be able to ask questions, we'll be able to discuss this at a meeting and we'll be able to have those, you know, questions answered, so. But I do want to thank Campbell County Sheriff's Office for doing a fine job. I want to thank Judge Anita De Leon for doing a wonderful job. And they were here promptly, they conducted a, uh, you know, a thorough investigation, they did what they had to do. So I do want to definitely, you know, give them kudos for the good job that they do. And I do appreciate Campbell County Sheriff's Office for all that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I was just going to add.
I know, I know that Councilman McClab was also keeping in contact with the sheriff's office because he was calling and keeping me informed also. I think with this transition that's going on with one administration to the other also is adding to the confusion a little bit. But I do thank you very much for your comments and, and I, I really appreciate that. So we're going to move forward to the boards and commissions report. Does anyone, uh, here speak for historic commission? How about the parks commission?
I'm going to refrain from giving any, any report at, at this meeting.
For, uh, for the parks, okay, thank you. Um, planning and zoning, Lisa, do you have anything to report?
Um, yes, ma'am, just that there are continued, um, uh, inquiries in regards to developers with land in our area. Um, just want people to know that it's going to happen. As far as growth is going to happen, there's, there's nothing specific at this time. We don't have any particular applications that I can discuss, but things are still moving.
Yes, okay, and I think Jared's got more on that later. Um, anybody from the river board have anything to discuss? I don't see anyone.
So, um, I would like to say a little bit about the, I, I was in contact with the, uh, river committee in regards to dark skies and, um, our dark skies resolution and just getting clarity from Bluebonnet Electric. So Bluebonnet does give you an option for having the dark sky lighting. Um, I was in communication with their, um, their media representative that put stuff out because I was like, there's nothing on their website in regards to dark sky. So they were going to put a blurb in their newsletter and add something on to their, uh, website. So, uh, the river, uh, committee has been, uh, making sure that we are protecting our night sky here in Martinville.
Okay. Okay, so let's go on to the consent items. Um, the minutes have been passed out, there's minutes from, uh, December first, twenty twenty, and two other sets of minutes from April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, and June tenth, twenty nineteen. Does anyone have any comments about those?
Mike, was that clear with what you wanted on there? Your minute, the minutes?
The, the, previously, we discussed the, the January minutes, um, where, where Councilmember McClab had comments. We have not had an opportunity to, to correct those.
These are for December.
Okay, yeah, these are December first, twenty twenty. And from special meetings, April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, and June tenth, twenty nineteen.
I only received the December one in my hard copy packet, and so I'm looking in my email and, and I, I personally have not reviewed the April fifteenth or the June, what was the date?
Um, April fifteenth, June tenth.
Twenty nineteen.
And those were for special meetings that were called, like closed meetings?
Did you have time to review them?
Were, were, was the April fifteenth, June tenth emailed to us?
Yes. They were to me.
I make a motion to go ahead and, uh, approve the April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, June tenth, twenty nineteen, and the December first, twenty twenty minutes. And, and the accounts payable.
I second that.
Okay, um, is there any more discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Lisa, do you want to pass it or?
I just, I just found it, if, if I can just, I, I hate to, yeah, I hate to, um, to vote on something that I haven't looked at at all. So without turning upside down the upper part, I'll just look at it for a minute.
Okay, Sam?
Do you approve or not approve?
I have no questions about it.
Okay. Um, Mike?
I approve, yes.
Okay, so that comes back to Lisa. Yeah. Oh, Jan, yeah, you seconded it.
I approve.
Okay, thank you.
I do too, I just looked at them, they're both very short, yes, I approve.
Okay.
We, we still need a vote from Sam.
Yeah, Sam did not approve or not. Do you approve the minutes?
The minutes from the past meetings that have just been mentioned.
And the accounts payable.
And the accounts payable.
And the accounts payable, okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item. We did the auditor's report, didn't we, under the?
Yeah, so, so the discussion on this is, is to accept it. I, we heard a note from the auditor that they would need to, to make an administrative change on one of the charts to account for the revised, um, figures for two thousand nineteen. I, I, if it's, I think it's acceptable to approve with that, with that change, with the change to the, to twenty nineteen reinstated correction. And so that'd be my recommendation to council.
I'll make a motion that we accept the fiscal year twenty twenty annual financial report and independent auditor's report to include the corrections that were presented tonight.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Does that work for you, Sylvia, in terms of motion?
Well, I would like to, if she would state exactly what.
Councilmember Show, can you add with twenty nineteen reinstated correction?
Yes. Yes, so including the twenty nineteen reinstated.
Restated.
Restated.
I think there's only one page that changed on page thirteen, it's like a heading, a heading title.
Yeah, it's an administrative change.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Uh, yes, I, I have one question about the minutes on December first, twenty twenty.
No, we're not on the minute.
Oh, we're, yeah. We're on, we're on eight A.
We're, we're approving this packet.
Annual financial report.
Yeah.
That the auditor just presented, but, um, we're approving it with a correction. Are you for it or against it? Sam?
I'm for it.
Okay, and Mike? You seconded it, so you're good. Jan?
I.
I, okay, so we've got Jan and Lisa, Sonia.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it, it has passed. Okay, good, that was a really good report. I really commend, uh, Dwayne and, uh, Mayor Devini, uh, for doing such a wonderful job. Thank you very, very much. Um, now, there was one thing that, um, do you have a, a report, Jared? Okay, so there's, go ahead.
Yeah, you can, you can describe this one if you want.
Um, these documents, I guess y'all have been cleaning out old records and so forth. And there's twenty-two boxes that they've labeled that can be shredded, is that correct?
That's correct, so we follow the, um, state retention schedules for records that are, that are categorized and classified by these, this GR nomenclature, general record one oh two, one zero dot two five and things. So all of the destruction dates have, um, since gone through, with the one exception of the records under GR one thousand, which are temp, records of temporary information or reference information that are administratively valuable. They're no longer administratively valuable. And so, um, as we continue to make space in our storage facility, uh, we're looking to, to destruct these in accordance with our retention schedule.
And then how do we, how do we destroy these?
Yeah, so after, a- after we receive authorization for destruction for our city ordinance, we can, we will then coordinate with a private company to come in and shred those boxes. And I believe it's, it's under my discretionary authority, under my spend limits of less than a thousand dollars to go ahead and do that. So, uh, we won't need a separate motion for. So, uh, we won't need a separate motion for, for that activity, we'll just need to, once I have approval here, then we, we make record that we destroyed these, we, we retain a record that we destroyed these files, um, and so we're looking to destroy these files now.
And just, just as a bit of an update, uh, Mayor Glaze, we previously had discussed, uh, making certain that the, the council agreed that it was important to have a third-party, um, record destroying company be the ones to do it. We would gather them and then they do it. And so, um, anyway, that's, that's where that comes from, so we are all on agreement with.
Versus a burn pit?
Correct, no burn piles. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the document destruction schedule as presented.
It's the records for discretion, for, except the destruction of the presented records.
Are we allowed to go through those records to?
Yeah.
Look and make sure there's.
Well, yeah, if, if you wanted to.
Well, how about if we, you know, I mean, uh, the mayor, Catherine, would you wanna look to any of these records or anything? I mean, if you wanna look through these, or, I mean, since it's a new administration, maybe you wanna table it and give her a chance to at least glance through them.
Yeah, I would like to do that.
Let, let, let's make sure I'm clear for a second. Aren't these all court documents?
No, no.
No, only a portion of them are court records.
Financial and administrative also.
Got it.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to, uh, table this item until next meeting for anyone on council and, uh, the mayor to be able to peruse, uh, what's being destroyed.
I'll second that.
I'd second that.
Okay, what do we do with the first motion? I guess since nobody's seconded it, we don't do anything with it?
It died, yeah. It died.
And I second your motion.
Um, I, okay.
Okay. And Sam, uh, do you agree or not?
I agree that we should table it and, and postpone the destruction.
Yes.
Okay, and Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so the motion passed to, um, to wait until the next meeting to, so that whoever wants to take a look at these boxes can go ahead and take a look. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, at this time, Jared has asked to go into executive session. Since I'm not there, uh, Jared will have to take over the meeting, and then I guess I'll just wait until y'all come back.
I, I think for, for form's sake, it, it would go to the mayor pro temp to, to control the meeting, I would just be presenting, so go, in this case.
Okay, so, to Sonia, please.
And I am, I am going to come downtown so that I can be in on this portion, and will we be in chambers or in City Hall, so I know where to go?
Yeah, yeah, City Hall.
So we're gonna, we're gonna wait for Lisa, right?
Yeah, we'll take a five, ten-minute.
We'll do the cupcakes and ice cream.
There you go.
Uh, I make a motion that we, um, adjourn just for, until we go into executive session. Reese?
I'll second it.
Eight, eight oh five.
Thank you, Sonia.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm doing this, thank you.
All right, I'm going to, um, leave Zoom at the conclusion of the executive session. We'll be reopened to public, um, se, public session, and that can take place here in, in council chambers. But for now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the Zoom meeting.
Okay, thank you.